I'll start off by saying I agree. We should have had it in a place with more parking. Okay, so. And let me also thank those who took a school bus here. As of 7 o'clock, we have not received any bus write-ups. So, thank you for following all the rules. Um, before I talk a little bit about the process, I do want to recognize. My name is Scott Kestner. I'm the superintendent for Stafford County Public Schools. I want to first just recognize some people that are here. And then we're going to get right into it. Start, because we are going to stop and be respectful. Everybody's time and stop at 8:30. First, I want to recognize the school board members that are here. Ms. Pam Healy, Ms. Sarah Chase, Ms. Holly Hazard, Ms. Jamie Decatur, Ms. Pamela Young, and Mr. Dwayne Macosta. So, thank you for coming. Ms. Reynolds, I'm sure will be coming soon. Ms. Egan, I'm sure will be coming soon. We also have two members of the Board of Supervisors. I want to thank them for being here. Ms. Meg Baumke and Mr. Jack Caviar. Thank you for coming. I would also like the following people just to stand up to be least recognized and acknowledged. I noticed that we have a lot of our elementary principals here. Could you please stand up and thank you for coming here tonight? So, we recognize that this obviously is a very, very important topic. It's a topic that people have strong feelings about. So, the way we structured tonight, and Cherie Johnson will go over it again. The way we structured it tonight is to try to leverage as much time as possible to answer questions. So, the reason we asked people to write questions and comments on cards is this way we could get to them faster in a sense and answer as many as we can. Now, those questions or comments that are not read, every single one of them will be sent to the school board. So, not one single comment or question will not be brought to their attention. Also, if you wrote something that is a question, we will post the answer to that question with the question on the redistricting subsection of our website. So, no question will go unanswered. Now, I wanted first by thanking many. I don't know the number, but we have received many, many emails of people sharing their comments, their concerns, and questions. And I want to thank you because I feel, I've read every single one of them, that people are sincere and as a concern, and people have been respectful. And so, I just want to thank you, and I hope tonight that will be how this whole process will take place. So, I'm going now to ask Ms. Cherie Johnson, who will talk more about how we're going to conduct the hour and a half.
My name is Cherie Johnson. I'm the Director of the Office of Strategic Communication and Community Engagement. Many of you have received note cards at the front door. You can place your questions on the note cards. After the presentation from our consultants with ArcBridge, I will serve as the moderator and read your questions. The consultants will answer those questions, and you can also continue to fill out the cards with more questions, and a member of the communication team will pick up your questions and bring them to me. You can simply raise your hand, and they'll come around to the audience. We will wrap up the event at approximately 8:20 PM and try to answer every question. If we do not answer this evening, we will respond to you within several days with information. Please be sure to place your name and email address on the card in case we have to follow up with you with that answer. This can be a frustrating time for some, but please remember to be respectful. Do not shout out questions. I will only respond to the note cards. There are two other meetings coming up, on January 17th at Stafford Middle School and January 23rd at HH Pool Middle School, all taking place at 7:00 PM and end at 8:30 PM. At this time, I would like to introduce our consultants with ArcBridge for the presentation.
I would like to welcome all of you to this first town hall meeting for elementary school redistricting. I am Preeti Mathur, and I am from ArcBridge Consulting. I will be presenting the plans to you today. Today, as the redistricting timeline that you may have seen on the SCPS website, we are here at Drew Middle School. And like Cherie just said, there are two more town hall meetings, and we are looking forward to your feedback and your input on the two plans that we have made. Today, we are going to present two plans for the SCPS Elementary School Attendance Areas. These plans have been developed using SCPS redistricting criteria. The plans have been reviewed by our experts, Stafford County Subject Matter Experts, and we have presented these plans to Stafford County Public School School Board on January Just to let you know who our subject matter experts are, we have representatives from the SCPS Transportation Office, SCPS Planning and GIS, SCPS Student Services, Stafford County Planning, and Stafford County GIS or Geographic Information Systems. Let me tell you about the redistricting criteria that was given to us by SCPS. The goal was to balance enrollment across 17 existing elementary schools, targeting about 85%, 85.6% utilization in the fourth year. We are supposed to look at proximity to schools, connectivity, contiguity, keeping the neighborhoods together as much as possible, and also use 10-year enrollment projection data that was provided to us by SCPS. We were also told that we are supposed to use the SCPS planning units as our building blocks for these plans. The enrollment projection data, and here I'm showing you the program capacity and the 10-year enrollment, and if you look at... If you look at the fourth year, that is what we are targeting. And if you were here or if you have reviewed the presentation from before, the program capacity was adjusted based on information about special education program. I wanted to show you the planning units, and these planning units are what we used as building blocks. There are about 411 planning units in Stafford County, and we have shaded them by the number of students that live in each of these planning units. If you look at the color coding, the lighter the color, the fewer the students in that planning unit. The darker the color, more students in those planning units. As you can see, there could be the ranges from 10 to 185, or even less than 10. And this is based on September 2018. No pre-K data. So, the schools... We analyzed the 2018 data, and we found that some schools are highly utilized, their capacity is being utilized, and some schools have low-capacity utilization. The ones with high-capacity utilization are Winding Creek, Whitewater, Stafford, Rocky Run, and Brent. The one with low capacity are Garrisonville and Rock Hill. There are some... There are four schools which have attendance areas which are disconnected attendance areas. And you can see on this slide, you're seeing Hampton Oaks and Parkridge. And the arrows are showing you different pieces of those attendance areas. And in the next slide, we have Falmouth, and we have Brent. Having shown you the redistricting criteria and shown you the data that we have used, I'm now presenting to you Plan A. And in your handouts, you have Plan A and Plan B. So, this is Plan A. And in the... On this map, the red outline shows you existing boundaries. And the color, like here in Rock Hill, these are the existing or current attendance areas. And the yellow is what Plan A is proposing. And just to mention that with Plan A, 3,195 students would be affected. And the data is based on 2019 to 2020 enrollment projection data. This is a seven-year view of the data. And once again, I want to bring your attention to the fourth year where the target was 85.6%. And all these slides are going to be put on the website, so you would have access to them even after today. This is Plan B. And once again, we have used the same color scheme. Red outline is your existing boundaries, and the color is proposed boundaries. And in this plan, 3,800 students would be affected. And here is the Plan B seven-year view. On this slide, what I'm showing to you is the demographic characteristics, and I have put them existing, Plan A and Plan B for you. So, this is current. This is Plan A, and this is Plan B. So, the first column here is the minority percentage. Then we have free or reduced lunch percentage. And then the third column here is limited English proficiency. Okay? So, we have that for Plan A as well as Plan B. And now, what I'm going to do is I'm going to go through each school so that I can show you, point out the changes for you. And we are not doing alphabetical order. We are using a geographic order. So, we will start from the top of the county, and we are going to work our way through each one of the schools. So, for every school, and if you have noticed or if you have had the time, we have these large-scale maps on the walls back there that if you had the opportunity, or before or after, you can go check them out. So, in this, in Rock Hill, what we have is one of our schools where we have 60, 65% And if we do nothing, it's going to be 68% up to the fifth year. So, with Plan A and Plan B, remember the target that we had, we have been able to come to these numbers here, 84% and 85%. The schools that were affected by Rock Hill were Brent and Garrisonville. So, if you look, they kind of look a little similar, but there are differences in Plan A and Plan B. For each map that I'm going to show you, we have listed the changes. We have numbered them 1 and 2 here. And we have listed all the neighborhoods that were... are currently in Brent but are now assigned to Rock Hill. Here we have... We are sending two neighborhoods to Garrisonville. This is Plan A. And now, I'm going to move on to Plan B. Okay? In Plan B, same to... Similar to Plan A, we have two changes. And these are the areas... Can I get some help here? I think the computer started to... I'll hit cancel. Where do I cancel?
So, while we're waiting during this process, we'll go ahead and get started on some of the questions. Okay? All right? Okay. So, the first question we have, and we also have members of our Transportation Department as well as Student Services, Mr. George Hummer. We also have Mr. Scott Haran, our Assistant Superintendent of Operations and Facilities. So, we'll start with our first question. If Plan B was put into place, how long would those students be on the bus to get to Ferry And I realize some of you haven't seen all of Plan B.
According to what we've reviewed, we can't... According to what we've reviewed, we can't give you exact times, but we've known... We have confirmed that there will be no significant longer run than anybody has at this time for Ferry Farm.
Okay. Our next question. Will the rising fifth graders be grandfathered in under either plan?
Before we put the laptop up, do we want to see more of the presentation or just stick with the questions? Okay. I'm just going to assume everybody said questions. Okay. Don't bother. Okay. We're good. Yes. So, what... Thank you. So, let me explain that. The presentation to the school board took about an hour. And the school board and I agree felt that to give time to answer questions, we had to do an abbreviated version. So, that's why there's a different version. But the answer... Fifth grade... Okay. So, let me just finish this. So, the answer is we will put what you partially saw on the website so everybody could see the rest of it.
I was actually referring to some of the demographic data significantly different. And so, we were interested in... I mean, I think this can be addressed in the question and answer portion also, but I was hoping that through the presentation, that discrepancy was going to be explained to us.
Okay.
That was the slide that I went down on, and there was significant... The numbers were significantly different.
Okay. We'll definitely address that. And let me just finish up on the fifth grade question. Yes, fifth grade, rising fifth grade students will be grandfathered, but the parents will need to drive that child to the school in which he or she is currently at. Okay? So, do you want to... All right. So, let's just look... So, we're going to just answer this one question about the last slide we saw, and then we're going to move on to the questions. So, the question is what they saw online.
The numbers have changed because we got a new dataset. And what happened? You'll see the changes in minority percentages, and I think I would let Matt explain how the numbers are different.
Thank you, Preeti. Matt Townsend, Supervisor of Planning and GIS. The numbers for the free and reduced percentage by school changed as well as the minority. The free and reduced was the result of a... We identified an import error through our student management system. So, we corrected that, and while we were working on that data to correct that, there was a... An error with the Hispanic minority field or race not causing a flag variable to trip. So, the minority now includes everything other than white, whereas before Hispanic was left off. So, that's been corrected. We supplied that new dataset to the consultants, and we have updated data that's correct now.
Okay. Moving on to the next question. Someone asked, "Has anyone researched the bus routes for the proposed redistricting? And after the town halls, are you going to update the plans based on the concerns from parents?"
The bus routes were reviewed by our route coordinators. The bus routes were reviewed by our route coordinators and supervisors, and at this time, as I said, there's nothing that stands out to us. Anything we do right now will be based on this year's data, current data. So, to give specifics would be giving you false information. But based on what we can look at, we don't see anything that stood out to us as being longer than any student at this time is currently on a bus. Nothing significantly changes.
Please refrain from yelling out. We want to stick to the questions on the note cards. So, please refrain from yelling out. Are you finished? Okay. All right. The next question. Are prior rezones being taken into consideration? Are prior rezones being taken into consideration?
So, the school board requested that we provide information on the neighborhoods that have been redistricted in the last five years. We provided that information, and the school board will take that in consideration as they look at Plan A and B.
Some of the new attendant zones appear connected but are actually divided by commercial, industrial, or agricultural areas. This shows only actual residential areas.
So, both plans do. There are areas that are heavily industrial use versus residential, and the plan shows contiguous areas between those. What's really important are the actual roads and the artillery... Artilleryals that we are using to connect those schools. So, that is true. Whoever wrote that comment, it is true there are industrial areas that make that connection to the different neighborhoods. But that is current in our current configuration, and it exists in both of the plans. And it'll be something that will be very difficult, if at all possible, to make that different. And we have areas that are connected by industrial, typically industrial areas, and so it will be in the plan.
The next question. If the goal of redistricting is to keep school capacity at 85% or lower, why is the new Moncur already at 93% capacity? Why, if you're keeping capacity so high, was it necessary to remove Acquah Harbor from attending Moncur?
We have been following the redistricting criteria that was provided by SCPS. And I do want to let you know that Plans A and B are two different configurations, and right now, we are here to get your feedback. And once we get that, then we'll work with that as well.
The next question. How do these plans affect enrollment and demographic distributions at the middle How do these plans affect enrollment and demographic distribution at the middle school level?
So, middle school is not being impacted. The middle school zones that we have today are the middle school zones that we will have tomorrow. That's one thing I just really share with you.
What steps are you taking to make sure that the redistricting decisions are proactive for student growth rather than reactive?
I think the question was, which is, I think, is a very fair question. How do we work as a community, the school board, Board of Supervisors, that not every few years, we're coming back to redistrict? If... I think that's the question, how I understand it. And the only thing I could share, from my short time here, there have been meetings between Board of Supervisors members, school board members, myself, and the county administrator. And I just will tell you, this is more than just a belief. It's... I've experienced. There is a desire, more than a desire, to work together to really put our hands around this issue so we're not redistricting every few years and have conversations about additional schools, what triggers an additional school, where schools should be, and not to have you as parents feeling like every three, four, or five years, we're asking your child or children to go to another school. So, there is truly a desire to be proactive and not reactive. But where we are right now, as you know, is that some schools, doesn't matter how we got there, that's important to learn from history, but some schools are just way over capacity and others are under capacity. And we have to figure out a way to do some greater balancing.
Okay. The next question. Why are we choosing larger class maximums which increase class sizes?
I guess I get paid the most. So, the question, I believe, is which has been somewhat of confusing out there and an area that I think, again, the school board, I know, as a matter of fact, tomorrow night is having some conversation about this. So, we have staffing patterns. And staffing patterns basically state when we look at our budget based on how many students we have at a grade, that helps us to know how many teachers we need to have. Okay? What the school board wanted to do is make sure that was aligned with the school capacity. So, where we are right now, and this is one of the things that I think people saw, is that all of a sudden, the capacities at your school increased in certain cases, maybe in all cases. And that was a... There was pretty much few reasons behind that. One, as you may know, we're opening up a new early childhood center off Garrisonville Road, North Star, and that's taking 21 classrooms that are currently sitting in the elementary schools. So, that gives us the ability to put more children in schools that had programs for early childhood special ed, Head Start, or Virginia Preschool Initiative. And then, and then, there's a couple other reasons, but the other major reason was that the school board went and adjusted or aligned. They didn't really adjust anything. They just aligned their staffing patterns to the school capacity, so the numbers went up. So, the school board, I know, is... And tomorrow night, as an example, through a subcommittee, is going to be looking at that question and seeing if any adjustment is necessary.
The next question. What was the consultant's specific direction given for the redistricting? They promised three to five options, and we have two. Are any more coming? And what staff, school board members, parents, teachers, or others were involved in this process?
So, as the consultant presented tonight, they presented two plans. That's what we asked them for. We narrowed that down originally. It was two to three, but after their presentation to the school board, we wanted two plans, and those plans were presented as they are through these town hall meetings. The school board will then take input from these meetings as well as input from the emails and Facebook and all the other avenues that you have to comment, and they will consider those as they look at these plans. So, they'll have that time to consider the plans.
The next question. How much and how important was continuity of education used in the preparation of the two options? The question was, "How much and how important was continuity of education used in the preparation of the two options?"
So, the question is continuity of instruction as it relates to the redistricting. So, I'm going to make a statement. So I'm going to make a statement, I don't expect everybody to agree, but I'm just going to make it anyway, all right? We have 17 elementary schools. My opinion is we have 17 really, really good elementary schools, okay? What we do believe impacts instruction is overcrowded, and we're trying to address that issue. And what I feel very comfortable saying is that regardless of what school your child's going to, they're going to get a very good education. It's going to be different in the beginning, because they're going to be in a new physical location, but they're going to get a very good education. So the continuity of instruction was to assure that we don't continue on a trend, based on the growth in Stafford County, that some schools will have extremely large classes, take away space that is valuable, because we have to add more classroom seats. And that's the continuity of instruction that we had to weigh. So that's my answer.
The next question, is the school board strictly considering Option A or B? Or are there other options or possible modifications to Plans A or B being considered?
So I also want to mention, just before I get to that, which is, February 12th and 26th are two school board meetings where there will be an opportunity for people to go to a microphone and make comments and ask questions. So I just want to make sure that that experience is not, you know, that we're not taking it away from you. So the board is collecting every piece of information, every feedback that they're receiving, including tonight, every board member is here tonight. After the two board meetings in February, they do have options. They have option to go with A, they have option to go with B, they have an option to say, we want another plan, okay? That's really what they have. So we're all going to learn through the deliberations that the board will have. Every deliberation, every discussion will have been an open session in front of the public, either being there or on TV.
What is the deciding factor between Plan A and Plan B in terms of redistricting?
I can't speak for the school board, so that deciding factor will be all of the input that they receive from the community, as well as their personal analysis of each plan, and input from staff. So there is no deciding factor that we're aware of at this time. It's going to be a collection of all the information and see what meets the needs of the community the best.
Have you considered the increased transportation costs of Plan B, sending Emory Mill to Park Ridge while passing Autumn Ridge, who is closer to Park Ridge?
Again, Ms. Barbara Lancaster from Transportation mentioned that when they did the cursory review of each plan, they saw no critical items that would cause a concern from the Transportation Department. We have not done a in-depth, full analysis on each specific bus route on each plan. Obviously, that will be done, but at this time, it hasn't been done, and so no cost difference associated with any plans. But again, we feel that there is not a significant difference in the plans to what we currently have, and therefore, that any cost difference would be minimal, if at all.
If you choose neither Plan A or B, will an unknown third option keep Emory Mill at Winding Creek?
So we don't know what Plans C, D, E, or F would look like. What we do know is that there's a desire to keep some neighborhoods together, okay? And the board is hearing everything. No one's going to tell you what Plan C is, because the board hasn't discussed anything except Plan A or B at this point.
If you are a Stafford County teacher, and your child goes to Falmouth, is there a chance that your child can stay at Falmouth next year?
I see this personally as a superintendent, and a benefit for our employees to have their children be able to go to the school they work.
What happened to the past proposal from 2015 to move all of Hampton Oaks subdivision to Hampton Oaks Elementary School? Was that not considered at all?
That's correct. That's correct. Part two of that redistricting effort that was approved by the school board at that particular time was not implemented with the idea that this larger redistricting effort was being considered, and now we're in the process. So part two was never implemented for the 2018-2019 school year. That information is on, you know, on our archives. If you need to get that information, you can, and it's certainly available. But again, it was not considered.
With regards to Plan B, how does separating Hampton Oaks neighborhood into four elementary schools achieve the goal of proximity to schools and keeping neighborhoods together?
We have used the redistricting criteria provided by SCPS. We have used the redistricting criteria provided by SCPS. And in some cases, you know, the criteria may be competing. So please provide us with your feedback, and we will look into it. Thank you.
The next question, are we as a school system waiting for all schools to reach capacity before we consider building another school?
I know what the answer to get to get more applause. Yeah, so as I stated earlier, the answer is no, I hope not. The school board and board of supervisors have to come to a decision real quickly, what triggers a new school, okay? We met maybe a month ago or so, and that conversation has started. And yesterday, I met with the county administrator to continue the conversation. Tomorrow, as I already told you, the school board has a subcommittee addressing that. And my hope or expectation is that the school board and board of supervisors will get together very soon to discuss the 18th elementary school for Stafford.
Can we put a question on the ballot to fund an elementary school using bonds with increased sales tax and let voters decide to build a new school?
I don't really know the rules in Stafford. Some communities do do that, it's not unheard of, to have a referendum. I will not put anybody on the spot, but I think that's a conversation we could have jointly with the board of supervisors.
How does Transportation plan on managing bus traffic on Northampton Boulevard since it's already a struggling situation in the mornings and afternoons? How does Transportation plan on managing bus traffic on Northampton Boulevard since it is already a struggling situation in the mornings and afternoons?
Well, Transportation doesn't particularly manage traffic on any particular boulevard or street as much as we do manage to up our buses through the traffic. So we will continue to do that as safely and as efficiently as we do in the past.
What is the classroom capacity used to calculate overall school capacity?
For a standard classroom, it's 24. For kindergarten, grades one through three are calculated at 26, and fourth and fifth grades are 27.
It appears that a new methodology for capacity is in place. How many students will now be in each classroom K through five?
For a standard classroom, on average, taking the average of all the class sizes in the school, 26 is the average maximum that can be in each school, in each classroom in each school, minus any CSR schools, any class size reduction schools.
What transition plan is in place for children who need extra help, like, for example, special ed?
So of course, we're going to work in conjunction with each of our schools, school administration, support staff from our office, to make sure that we have a smooth transition for all of our students. Of course, that's going to be a big component for all of us, so we're going to make sure that we collaborate with all of our schools and our support staff.
How likely is it that the parent's opinion will have any bearing on the decision made?
And we started about a month ago, we had our first meeting. We're going to have, this is first of three additional meetings, and as I mentioned, two school board meetings. And I don't know if this number is right, but we've had received, I would say somewhere in the neighborhood of probably 100, maybe 150 emails already. Every one of those, 250 is going up, every one of those emails are, if one board member receives it, he or she distributes it to all seven members. So there's not one correspondence that's not being sent to all the board members.
What are the number of students moving with each plan? What is the total percentage moving across the entire county?
And in Plan B, 3,800 students would be affected, out of 12,476 students that Stafford County Elementary School has.
The geographical areas on the map, such as Vulcan Quarry Wildlife Preserve, Acquahia Business Center, Stafford Marketplace, are not residential areas. Why are they showing on the redistricting maps? Why are they listed as APUs? Are you pulling student numbers from these APUs?
What I want to show you is, I want to take you back to the map that I showed you before. What we did was, we got the elementary school students, and we aggregated them by the planning units. So if they are commercial units, there would be no students living there.
Why are older, established neighborhoods being forced to have their children shuffled around the county just to make room for the abundance of new neighborhoods?
Sometimes there'll be questions that we're going to answer, and sometimes we're just going to hear the question. And I'm not going to get into neighborhood warfare, older versus the newer neighborhoods. We're all Stafford County, and this is an issue for all of us. But, so, please respect that we're not reviewing the questions before, we're reading them. But I'm going to maybe take the liberty at times to hear the comment and move on to the next question.
When the architect designed the new Moncur Elementary School, what did they list as the student capacity?
The school capacity was 966 students. You're probably wondering why the program capacity listed one figure later, and then another figure again. So the program capacity was not the design capacity. The program capacity was listed at 966, it was changed at 10,080, under last year's program capacity criteria. That criteria changed, as has been explained, where the staffing alignment and the program capacity alignment was brought together this year, and that changed the capacity of Moncur to 10,050. We also had the pre-K, was, 1,050, 10,000, sorry, 1,050. We also removed, as part of that realignment of the program capacity, we removed pre-K from that count. And we also did another change on that alignment, from 24 and 25 to 24, 26, and 27. Those are the two biggest changes for Moncur that caused that change in numbers.
Could you please describe how feeder patterns influence the analysis process?
What we did was, we just looked at elementary schools, we did not look at any other middle or high schools.
I think feeder patterns. The question was, were feeder patterns used to help develop the plan? It's certainly in our criteria, but it was not a major factor in the development of the plans. You can see in the slide that she presented earlier, there were three or four main criteria items. If all 17 of the criteria items in the regulation or the guidelines, if they're all the priority, then nothing is the priority. We identified four or five items that, for them, contiguous attendance zones, proximity to schools, transportation, and I'm not sure what the other ones. But those were the main ones. And geographic continuous attendance zones are very important. So the question is, did feeder patterns enter it? No, they were not a significant factor in the development of the plans.
Do you have a number of students who will be moving to different schools under each option?
Yes. That data was asked for by the school board and provided. If we haven't posted it on the website, we will post it in the morning.
How were these two proposals created? What criteria was prioritized for each one?
The criteria that we used was, we wanted to make sure that we get up to 85.6% capacity utilization in each school. That was one criteria. The other criteria was making sure that the schools were connected, the areas were all one attendance area. And the third thing that we did look at, was very important, was neighborhoods. We wanted to keep the neighborhoods together as much as possible.
Why were only two proposals created? Why not three or five?
I think that question has already been answered. But we, in the past, having too many options creates one confusion for our board, staff, and the superintendent felt that having two options for the board to consider, and if they choose to modify those options in the future, then so be it.
How have the traffic patterns been studied for the redistricting plans?
I think that question has already been answered.
How many neighborhoods are currently divided between three or more schools currently with Plan A, with Plan B?
In Plan A, we have 11 neighborhoods that were split, and in Plan B, 16 neighborhoods were split. We can get that information, I do not have it here right now. were split. We can get that information. I do not have it here right now.
How do you expect to retain highly qualified educators with class sizes that will continue to increase?
So, the question was, how do we expect to keep really good teachers if the class sizes keep increasing? And part of the plan is to try to address that issue. Part of the plan is to try to address the issue, okay? And, so we need more space, and we created more space, as I already described, by North Star and some other things. So class sizes is something, the board has set budget goals, I think it's their second goal, is to look at class sizes. So it's an issue.
Why do you think it is acceptable for an elementary student to ride the bus for an hour and 20 minutes one way?
It's not. And if we had the ability to change that, dealing with our manpower shortages with bus drivers, we currently have bus routes that extend over an hour, as many of you know that. There are some parts of the county that geographically are just very hard to service, and that's Marlboro Point, we have some things in Wide Water. Those specifically are challenges that our Transportation Department has. It's tough, as you all know, recruiting bus drivers and keeping them in our fleet and keeping them retained. It's very tough, and it's challenging every single day. And the team down at Transportation deals with that. They, I think they've been taking significant headways lately, and we've increased the number of bus drivers that we have. But it's not acceptable. And if we could increase that and do better, or decrease it, I'm sorry, if we could decrease that, we would. It's just a matter of bus drivers, buses, and our geographic challenges. So, yeah.
Okay, next question. How can you effectively forecast school enrollment in February when new kindergarten registration isn't until March of 2019?
Kindergarten cohort is projected using five years lagged resident live birth data from Virginia Vital Statistics.
How many students will be within walking zones now?
Say that again.
How many students will be within walking zones now?
We have not done that analysis. Obviously, we have walking zones at some of our schools. We did do an analysis to see if our walking zones were impacted by the redistricting, i.e., were some of the walking zones now not a walking zone? And so would we have to address that? We looked at it, and we found that none of the existing walking zones were impacted, our first look. Now, will there be some new walking zones created as part of one of these plans? Potentially, it will be. But until we find out what plan or what modification of what plan that the school board chooses to pursue, we will not take action to address a walking zone. Because walking zones require not only a physical assessment of the area being considered for walking, to make sure there's sidewalks, crosswalks, safety if we need a crossing guard, all of those things need to come into play. We get a VDOT involved with the Sheriff's Department, and we form a group that comes together, along with the principal and some of their staff, to look at, is it feasible to make a walking zone at this school? So we haven't addressed those at this particular time. It will be after the fact of any redistricting plan that's approved.
Were the consultants with Arc Bridge given the number of students represented in each APU, and if so, why are those numbers not being shared with the public?
We were provided with a student file, student residence file, and we did the overlay by overlaying the students with the planning units and coming up with the numbers that I showed you on the map before. And that is actually a part of the first...
We provided the projections by planning unit to the consultants that were done by our other consultant who handles the enrollment projection forecast. So they've received the data from us, and it was projections by planning unit. We filtered it down to only kindergarten, or only elementary school projections for the 10-year duration. They ended up focusing on four years out to accommodate any kind of future growth and then the growing of the county, and that we were planning for the future.
Okay. Why are we redistricting away from the schools that the community backs up to?
I think the answer for a question like that, as well as other questions, are, the consultant looked at what they felt was trying to achieve in year four of the projections, trying to achieve that 85, 85.6%. They didn't get it on every school, as you've already pointed out in some of the questions. Are some of the schools, are some of the neighborhoods close to those schools being moved? And logically, you'd say, does that make sense? And some, you know, some of those things occurred. So I don't know if there's a, the answer is, we're trying to achieve that 85%. And so you're trying to balance it, and we're trying to balance it against 17 schools. So as you push one way, something has to give another way. And so it's very difficult to do that. And are there small iterations that could be changed, or somewhat, we're relying on the consultant's non-biased professional judgment on these. And so they've made a call on these plans. Are there other alternatives where this neighborhood could trade for another neighborhood? I'm not going to say there is or there isn't, but it's all done by numbers and students in these APUs.
With such significant changes in the amount of students leaving or going to elementary schools and school capacity, will teachers be moved to new schools to provide some continuity, emotional stability, and a familiar face?
In the past redistrictings, when we've moved students, HR will work with the schools involved, and they will determine if de-staffing is required at one school and increased staffing at another based on the student enrollment.
According to the work session notes from October 23, 2018, the consultant stated that her firm will work with the division staff to develop an application process for committee members. Was this done, and if so, who was on that committee, and when did they meet, and what was produced?
We had, we had that option to have a redistricting committee, but when we presented it to the board, they did not want a redistricting committee. They wanted all of you to be involved in it.
Okay. The next question, the next question is, can you show how each of these plans will affect the feeder schools?
We certainly can. We have not done that yet. So we can certainly show a feeder pattern associated with either one of the plans, but we have not done that.
How have San Diego and York County fared? Have they needed to make amendments or changes to Arc Bridge's plans?
Keep in mind that Plan A and Plan B are starting points. We will work with the school board, and we will listen to you. And, oh, in Yorktown and in San Diego, we did make changes after meeting with the community and the committees.
How do you plan to maintain the strong PTO and volunteerism of Moncur if the neighborhood with the majority of the parental involvement, Acquahia Harbor, is pulled from the school?
I am positive that Principal Mackey will rally whatever students and families attend Moncur in the future, and make that a strong viable PTO, PTA.
Who is responsible for making sure the deliverables of the contract are met?
Working under Dr. Kizner's supervision, it's my office, myself, and Matt Townsend.
If SCPS is paying $8,950 for three to five options, why are we, as the public, only being shown Plan A and B? If there will be more, we'd like to know.
I think that question's already been answered. We decided that we only wanted two options. I think in their proposal, they had said we can develop three to five, but we made that decision to develop two.
What was the decision process for splitting a single neighborhood, Hampton Oaks, that majority can walk to school into two or four different schools?
Once again, I want to mention that we were trying to achieve an 85.6% goal. And once you balance one area, then, you know, you have to take it from somewhere else. So really, there was nothing like, you know, that I want to split a neighborhood, or we want to do that. There was no such logic. We are trying to balance the numbers. We are here to listen to you, and we will work with the board and move forward.
Currently, the area that walks to Hampton Oaks is not impacted by the redistricting. Now, there may be students that walk from other areas outside the walking zone that walk to Hampton Oaks, but the walking, the approved walking zone is not impacted by either Plan A or B.
Exactly how many full elementary redistrictings has Arc Bridge completed?
We have, we have worked with eight school districts.
Where do the projected student numbers come from in the Ferry Farm Elementary Zone? Based on my knowledge, all classrooms are currently being used. Where would these students fit into the current school?
So the projections are provided by our consultant who looks at historical student information, as well as any kind of new growth that's contributing at the planning unit level. As far as available seats in a classroom, if a school is showing available capacity, that indicates that every seat in every classroom is not being utilized to its potential, to its max.
Did Arc Bridge do any on-the-ground research about how students' travel times to school would be impacted?
We did look at your roads, and the roads have something called speed limit, and we looked at that as well.
Why are these students crossing over Interstate 95 to attend Winding Creek when Stafford Elementary School is closer?
Are you talking about Plan A, Plan B?
That was Shamara Taylor. Is that you?
Okay.
She wanted to know, is that Plan B?
We, we looked at areas, and our goal was to balance, and that is what we did.
Just to add on to that, the current attendance zone for Winding Creek does go over 95. In one plan, it reduces the amount of neighborhoods that stay on the east side of 95, and the other plan, it has very little change.
Are middle and high school zones going to be redistrict in a way that overlaps with elementary school zones?
Again, we're not redistricting middle and high school. If and when that occurs, I'm sure consulting with the school board and the superintendent will develop a strategy for that particular effort.
How does each plan ensure that SPED, ESOL, and Focus Kids have appropriate pullout learning space?
Considering the ideal program placement for special education low incidence programs was implemented into this redistricting process in the program capacity that's used to calculate the enrollment utilization that we're balancing on. So it's, this redistribution of programs or the proposed redistribution of programs is reflected in that program capacity to ensure that those programs have the required space needs, or space that they need. Every, to my knowledge, every elementary school has a focused program currently. And ESOL programs will probably need to be adjusted and tweaked based on the number of LEP or ESL students that reside in the new attendance area.
Please explain the difference between design capacity versus program capacity, and which is being used for redistricting?
Can you repeat that one, Shuri?
Okay.
We are using, we are, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Okay. Please explain the difference between design capacity versus program capacity, and which is being used for redistricting?
Okay. Design capacity is using, uses general classroom sizes of 24K through 3 and 25, 4th and 5th grade. And it's standard across all classrooms. You just count the number of full-size classrooms in a school, the number of special ed-designed classrooms at 8 capacity, and that gives you your design. Program capacity looks at the available space that's currently within the school, as in the total number of rooms, the classroom inventory, and programmatic space restrictions and resource spaces are allocated based on the exact programmatic and resource space needs that exist within each elementary school. This capacity calculation for the redistricting is utilizing program capacity with no preschool and with the redistributed low-incidence special education programs.
How is redistricting in my child's best interest when this is not cost-effective? It is time-consuming, and it is hard on students and teachers. What is the goal of bringing on hardships for students?
I think this question was answered by the superintendent earlier. The idea is, we are trying to balance enrollment at all of our elementary schools, and we think that in itself creates a better environment for our students and teachers, which ultimately is looking out for the best interests of all of our kids.
The student population projection used in 2015 redistricting have proven to be wrong. Conway Elementary was supposed to be at 88%. Is anyone looking to validate the projection models being used? Is anyone looking to validate the projection models being used?
Well, I think our, well, I know that our projection model is, is very good. We have data that shows our projection over the last five years compared to actuals. And the five years we went, we were in the triple digits at 180-ish. We went down to 160 and we went to 170. And the last two years, we were at 24 and 13 respectively. And that's an aggregate for all three levels. So that's not only good, it's very good. So I am very confident in our, in our projection data. Now, where we are having some challenges is narrowing it down to the specific schools. Can't comment on the data that was, that was used back in 2015 saying we're going to have this percentage at this school. Obviously, we did not implement Part Two. We're implementing it essentially now as part of this larger effort. But again, the, in my opinion, our projections are very accurate and they're, they're going to stay accurate in the future.
Are the neighborhoods that were moved in 2015 exempt? If not, why not?
At this particular time, as we answered already, those neighborhoods are not exempt. However, the school board asked for information about which neighborhoods has been, have been redistricted in the last five years and we provided that to them. So we'll also, if it's not already posted, we'll post that on the website also.
Why are you using the maximum staffing load of 27 students per teacher in the projections? Do you believe this is the best way to educate our kids? Do you believe this approach is sustainable?
Again, I think that question was asked and answered. We are using 24 for kindergarten, 26 for one through third, and 27 for fourth and fifth. Whether that's what you feel is right or not, it's what the board, the school board decided to align that with our program capacity.
With the two new preschool facilities, with the new preschool facilities opening in August 2019, what is the plan to reuse those 20-plus classrooms across 10 schools?
Again, as part of the availability of classrooms at our elementary schools, we moved roughly 20 classes of pre-K programs out of the elementary schools. Some of them are actually going into the new North Star facility and some will be going into Gary Melchers. Then we redistributed some of our Head Start students from Gary Melchers to the New, North Star. So essentially, we have the two sites. They are essentially at capacity and those available classrooms in the elementary school are what's making some of our schools way underutilized. We have Rock Hill and Garrisonville. Once you remove those, the, the percentage of utilization goes, goes down and therefore the rebalancing of our elementary schools, and that's what we're doing here. That's essentially the ground truth of the redistricting, rebalancing to the 85. So those classrooms will be utilized by K-5 programs.
If we are approaching capacity as a district, why was elementary school number 18 removed from the capital improvement plan?
The capital improvement plan, based on the program capacity of the elementary schools, we looked at elementary schools in aggregate. So our capacity in aggregate, I believe, is around 15,000 some, some odd seats. I don't know exactly what it is in front of me. Our capacity based on program doesn't exceed that aggregate currently, based on the new program capacity, doesn't exceed it in the 10-year CIP window. Therefore, elementary school 18 is being questioned whether we need it in the CIP right now. It's based on our current capacity and when the trigger. And as Dr. Kizner mentioned, we are talking about when do you pull, when does a new school, the trigger pulled on a new school to open? And so that's very important based on, it goes hand in hand. If you relax standards, or not relax, that's an incorrect word. If you change your standards on program capacity and utilize, you may need to utilize a different trigger on when it makes sense to open up a new school.
Why did the school board refuse to create a redistricting committee or involve parents or the community in this decision?
The school board hasn't refused to involve parents. The school board felt, again, they could speak for themselves, but the school board wanted to keep this process, to be honest with you, minimize a strong advocacy, people lobbying, friendships, and hiring an outside person that was only given one task, to give the best recommendations to the school board based on the data in front of them, and then the board, your elected officials, that will make the final determination. So just to be truthful, for this process, and I know, I'll just say one last thing. If we would have brought third or three or four different proposals, and if the school board changes to a third proposal, we'll still have another group of people that will not be satisfied. I think that this has to be recognized. So in order to keep this process moving forward and try to remain as factual as possible, recognizing the input, I felt the consultant was the best approach, which is not atypical in schools, in communities throughout Virginia and the country.
This person wants to know, who is Matt Townsend?
I am me. Matt, I'm Matt Townsend, supervisor of planning at GIS. I've been with Stafford County for a year and five months now. Before this, I was in Prince William County in their planning department as an analyst. We did many redistrictings. We did at least one a year. This is my fifth redistricting. As far as scope goes, this is just right in the wheelhouse of a normal redistricting scope that I'm used to working on. I've worked on elementary redistrictings, middle redistrictings. I'm very familiar with the projections and, and the school division, population projection methodology and best practices. I do GIS for the school division, obviously. Yeah.
Thank you, Matt. The next question, why the rush to move students academic year 1920 without a clear transition plan and thorough analysis on transportation, walking zones, et cetera? Can the board delay implementation one to two years to develop a clear, concise, executable plan?
All right. The board can choose to delay. The board would have to explain to the community what the positives would be delaying, what the consequences would be delaying. I would just tell you, and I know because I've been involved with it, I've been asking a lot of questions, there's been a lot of analysis. Transportation has been involved. What they have said clearly is that the routes, times that we have now and the route times moving forward, they will be in the same range. And matter of fact, I don't want to put words in their mouth, they've also indicated that we'll actually have more routes that will travel less time. So that analysis has been taken place. It's going on for a few months. The school board, why we are at a point to make a decision by late February, early March is to do what a lot of you are asking or at least suggesting, how much time does transportation need to now really finalize the routes to help transition your children, help move the staff, there will be staff changes. So there's a lot of work that we have to do the next few months to get ready for the 1920 school year.
Okay.
Just so you know, we have a lot of questions and a lot of, a lot of them are comments. Again, I just want to reiterate, every single one of them will be put in a, in a format so the school board sees every question, every comment. We still have two public meetings like this and we still have two school board meetings where people will again be, at that one, be able to come to a mic. I imagine the board will set some limitations on, on how many, how long they want to conduct it, but there will be more opportunities for input. But I just want to let you know, we're, we're not getting to all of them because I have to make a decision about school tomorrow and I can't make it while I'm sitting here. Okay? But if you stay around, I will, you will be the first one to know what decision I did make. Okay? But you have to wait patiently for another three minutes.
It's 8:21, so we're just going to take a couple more questions and wrap it up. The next question, why hasn't Stafford schools been more demanding to the county government as a whole to better control the development distribution to spread out the increases to a broader area along the 95 corridor?
Well, I just want to say, I got to be, this is a partnership and I did want to recognize Cameron Snelling, another board of supervisory members here. For three board of members to be here tonight, I take it as that there's great interest to partner with the school board to alleviate this concern. So again, I've only been here four months, but I've been impressed with the dialogue and discussion and honest conversations that both elected bodies are having. And there's great recognition, what we're asking parents to do and trust us is not easy. But we do have an, an issue in front of us that didn't start today. I think we have to recognize it didn't start today. The board had a choice, as some of you are suggesting, let's just forget about it and move on. I'm not sure, truthfully, if that's the best strategy. There may be another plan to look at, but I'm not sure. As I met with all the principals today and as one principal said, we kind of ripped the Band-Aid off, now we got to do something. So the, our school board is making some hard decisions, obviously some unpopular decisions depending on who you are. But I just am pleased, I've been doing this, this is my fourth redistricting as a superintendent, and to see three members of our appropriating body being here, I think is a very good sign.
All right. How about rebuilding Ferry Farm Elementary School to a 900-plus capacity school?
I think everybody who needs to hear heard.
And the last question, will administrators be moved as well?
I'll let them know right now. No, that, that's not being considered, to be honest with you.
All right. This concludes our town hall meeting. Thank you so much for attending. The next elementary school redistricting meeting will take place on January 17th at Stafford Middle School. We also have January 23rd at HH Pool and two school board meetings where you can offer public comment on February 12th and 26th. Thank you and have a great evening.
Okay. So you know, we've been monitoring the roads. We are going to have...